We're just about there. So if we can commence the meeting. Before we start, I'd like to say a very great welcome to everyone. It's delightful to see everybody in person, officers and members. And welcome to our new members as well. councillor King and councillor Allen, who very kindly is in the chair with me today. And councillor Bunny, who is our new member too. So I hope you find the meeting informative and hopefully have a good range of questions as we proceed. So if we can start with item number one, which is apologies for absence.
Apologies received from Mr Hallenby, Chair.
Thank you. And item two, declarations of members' interests. Andrew.
Chair, I've been asked to be an occasional independent person for West Lindsay District Council. That's examining complaints against councillors. I've accepted on condition that I will not investigate anywhere the district council is also a county councillor. Is that acceptable?
Yes, I'm sure so, Andrew. And obviously, if you were to only quit, you could take it up with a monitoring officer anyway. Thank you. Thank you once again. Item three, we have the minutes of the meeting held on the 19th of March 2021, which are in front of us. Are we all happy to approve those, those who are in attendance? Okay, Paul, would you propose, please?
Proposed.
Could I have a second, please?
I'll second them, Chair.
Thank you, thank you. And could all please indicate by a show of hands if they're in agreement with accepting the minutes? Thank you. That was carried, thank you very much. Thank you. We move to item four, on pages 13 to 44. And we have the external audit strategy for the Lincoln Pension Fund. And I believe we have, Michelle.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman. I'm Michelle Brady, I'm the Assistant Director for Finance. I am just going to introduce this paper. We have Mazars with us, who are external auditors. And at the March Committee, they presented the audit strategy for the Lincolnshire County Council accounts. And I believe this morning, they should be presenting the audit strategy for the Lincolnshire Pension Fund. So I'll hand over to Mazars, who will introduce themselves and his team, I believe.
Thank you. Mazars, could I bring you in, please? Technical issue, I think. David, any progress with bringing in Mazars? I think Mazars are on mute at the moment. We'll just have to wait a little time for them to get the audio on, I think.
So I think we can see on the screen there, we've got Cameron Waddell, who's the engagement lead for the Pension Fund audit from Mazars. And I think we can also see John, I don't know whether John, John Presley is the audit engagement manager for the Pension Fund audit. Hopefully, we can get one of them on to present their strategy for... We can move on, Chair, if you want to move to Lucy's paper next and come back to the next paper.
That would be a good strategy. And when we connect to Mazars, we can do that. I should say Mars, probably not. So we have the annual... So we'll move to the internal audit plans, is that what you suggested?
I suggest we'll go to Lucy's paper and then we can go back to Mazars. And then Sue Maycock's going to present the annual audit letters then after that.
Lucy, I'll hand over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chairman. I'm Lucy Pledge, Head of Audit and Risk for the County Council. And today, I'm presenting the internal audit annual plan for 2021/22. So I would take you to bookmark page 77 of the pack. And that really sets out how we choose what we are going to audit in the year. As you can see, in pulling together the plan, we draw on a number of sources of risk intelligence. And that includes our assurance framework, our risk registers and the corporate plan. So when we consult with the CLT, they also put in any areas where they would require independent assurance. So our plan is based on risk and it looks at the significant sensitivity and the level of assurance and the best time to undertake the work. And what we do in pulling together the plan is give you a statement of intent. It is updated every quarter, so it's a very flexible and adaptive plan. So it focuses on what really matters at the time during the year. So if I just move forward to page 78 and 79, that just brings together the themes that we look at during the year. And that covers all areas of the council's business. So we look at the financial governance, we look at some of the critical activities of the council, as well as key projects, and some of the cross-cutting areas within the council. And that's one of the key themes this year, particularly picking up the One Council approach under the corporate plan. So I won't particularly go into the details of the plan. But the plan is designed to help me pull together my Head of Internal Audit opinion for 2022. And the appendices gives you a bit of more insight of the areas that we were going to be looking at, how they link into the risk assessment on our assurance framework, and just gives you an indicative idea of what we're looking at. And particularly this year, we've given a bit more information around the ITC assurance and plan. So you can see in more detail the areas of activity under that area of the council's business. So the resources for the plan has been agreed. And I'm pleased to also state that we've managed to recruit some new auditors. So I'm confident that we have the resources to deliver the plan and that the council supports the audit process together with the Audit Committee. So I present the plan for your comment and discussion.
Thank you, Lucy. I'll look to mark to identify speakers, if I may, and we'll do it that way. But bear in mind, I haven't got a field, same field of view. Adam, thank you.
Yes, thank you. No, it's a very thorough plan. I've only got one question. Do you think you'll be able to meet this plan? I know you mentioned further auditors joining. And also, with regards to the RAG rating, there is a lot of black gaps. And I couldn't read where that was in the report as to what that meant. Thank you.
We've assessed our resources to deliver what we have as what we call a fixed plan. The rest of the plan is a dynamic plan. So I'm confident that we will deliver the plan as it stands at the moment. But those areas within that can change. And obviously, what we do during the year is provide you with a progress report. So we are looking at some resources continually through the year. And we're looking to build the apprenticeships through the service, which help grow our own, which we found is the most successful. Because as you know, we've recruited and lost some during the year. So that's our strategy going forward. But we set a plan that we believe that we can deliver. And the black areas are where they're not currently detailed enough on the assurance map for the council. So there's no assurance assessment against that. But we've been asked to provide some independent insight and assurance on that activity. So it's not currently segregated on the assurance map for the council.
Thanks, Chair. Yes, I'm pleased we've had assurance on the staffing because it has been a challenge in the past. But I am also impressed by the wide trawl that the council does, and particularly through apprenticeships. It is a very reliable way of growing your own and getting good quality staff with an embedded organisation philosophy. Pleased to see the continuing focus on ICT. It is the Achilles' heel of almost every organisation, so it needs to be right. One specific, Lucy, Better Care Fund, I may have lost sight of this in the last 15 months. Has an audit been carried out? Members will know, some of you will know, that I have a particular interest in joint-funded activity between different organisations, in this case, the NHS and the County Council. Because it's often difficult to hold the right people to account for particular outcomes. So Better Care Fund in particular, and also any other joint funds, where there might be ambiguity of responsibility or accountability.
In response to your question around the Better Care Fund, that was commenced at the beginning of the pandemic. So that was put on hold, so it is still in train. So it's an in-progress piece of work. So we are looking to do that. And one of the key areas around the governance statement is collaboration. So we are going to be looking at the governance arrangements around the local Lincolnshire Enterprise Partnership, as well as the Better Care Fund. So it is in our current plan, so it is being looked at.
That's on. So when the light's not on, it's working; when the light's on, it's not working. I've got a couple of questions. And I apologise if these have been raised in the past, or I apologise if there are locations or places we don't want to go. But you'll have to bear with me at the moment if that's all right. It's to do with project assurance, and I'm afraid it's a fairly detailed question. For the larger projects, we always go through some sort of assessment in terms of the benefits or the value for money that comes from that project before presumably a decision is made to spend money. And the Audit Committee looks at the processes that are used in that process. And I know from my past experience, which is to do with highway projects, we do a very detailed assessment in terms of the benefits coming from accident savings or journey time savings, or whatever it is, to actually show that there is value for money for the capital expenditure that's being proposed. What I'm not totally sure of what happens eventually, and I know from experience it rarely does, and whether it's an Audit Committee matter. But do we actually ever go back to the value for money assessment that's taken place to see whether that value for money has actually been delivered in practice?
It is part of the project lifecycle, so there is a benefit realisation. And those expected outcomes and results of that project are stated at the outset. As part of my work in the annual governance statement, that has been an area of identified as improvement. So that there needs to be more robust benefit realisation processes to circle back in the governance and oversight. And that will be picked up as part of our transformation programme work going forward. So it is an area that's been identified by the council that it needs to do a bit better in terms of giving that accountability. But it is part of, as you would expect, any project lifecycle.
Can I just follow up? I'm relieved to hear what you say, or pleased to hear what you say. In some projects, of course, the benefits are delivered over quite a considerable period of time. So I take it that there's an ongoing sort of assessment as well. You know, if you're looking for three years' accident savings or five years' accident savings or something like that, you know, the benefits do take some time to actually stack up to deliver the value for money assessment that was originally put forward.
They do, particularly capital projects. And the council's tightened its governance and oversight of the capital projects. I don't know whether my colleagues would want to stick... I can see two hands, so Andrew and Michelle would like to chip in.
Yeah, good morning, members. Andrew Crocombe, Executive Director for Resources. So absolutely the right question to ask councillor Allen. And indeed, at the moment, well, last couple of times that we've been at Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Management Board, members of that committee have been asking about longer lifetime benefits of certain projects. There is a paper at that meeting on Thursday where it might give rise possibly to an in-depth scrutiny panel review. So that, talk about the differences between the Audit Committee and the Scrutiny Committee. So Lucy's articulated the governance and the arrangement side. I think there's a thing about the performance side of things, and I think that might come up as part of that debate on Thursday. But happy to try and loop back and keep members of this committee abreast of any developments that happen in that sphere as well, just so you've got the full oversight. So is that okay, Chair?
Just to come back from the chair to Andrew, obviously, you know, we look at particularly road schemes and things of that nature, even though perhaps we aren't funding them entirely ourselves. There's always a net present value calculation done, along with all the due diligence and the under... And that, certain road schemes can be over decades. So situations technologically and politically change over time. Would we review those? I mean, once the project has been completed, then those net present value calculations may or may not come to fruition. But you have to do those before you make a decision to proceed with the project.
Yes, naturally, that would be one of the things that we're trying to look at. So just to delve into it a bit more. So I'll try and cover what we do at the officer level and then with what we maybe see that might happen as part of the scrutiny review, if the committee decide to go with it. So we, about 18 months ago, or a year ago, a year, 18 months ago, we set up at an officer level a capital review group, a CRG it's called, it's part of, it's set out in the council's capital strategy. So one of the remits that essentially the leader set to Michelle and I in terms of setting that up was to make sure that we could capture benefits and challenge business cases that are created at a lot earlier stage. Now, clearly, a year in, we've not had a massive project to come through that yet. It's the relatively small scale stuff. But one of the things that we've been discussing as part of that agenda is, at an officer level first, strengthening the lessons learned and, you know, the look back. So, you know, the most current big project that we've just essentially finished, or in the process of finishing, was obviously the eastern bypass. You know, had a number of challenges with it in terms of its cost and the delivery. A lot of it to do with weather and things that were outside of our hands. But naturally, something that we would want to look at to see whether some of those things can be better planned for and looked back at. But that coupled with this potential scrutiny review that the Chair of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board is looking at, I think would lay a natural, and would try and feed in as much of that as we could to make it as a worthwhile review as possible.
So that would inform policy and come back to us at some stage when that had been concluded. Thank you, Trevor, for that. Just one question for myself to our officers. Looking at the effective management of contracts, Lucy, and to deliver them on specification, on time and within budget, obviously, that's crucial as well. And particularly going back to what Andrew's just said regarding contract management, yeah, covers all the value for money issues and everything as well. Can you just stress the importance of that?
Yes, we have, as you see, included it in our audit plan. But we've also included it in our proactive counter-for fraud plan. So we'll be aligning the resources to look at how those contracts are being delivered and managed.
Yeah, thank you. We've just been through, what, 16 months of we-know-what, working from home, all of us. And the word working from home, efficiency of this council, the way it works, and fraud comes into my mind. Fraud's always, it's something I'm always into, even at district. And I just think, going down the road, that probably we ought to ask officers to put some sort of assurances together, some sort of paper together, sooner than later, that the council is really happy working the way we're working, on security, on the way of working, on ICT, because it failed this morning. So I just think that is a big thing we ought to consider going forward. We've never been there. We've never, ever been there. And I think we want to be on top of it going forward. So I think that's something for the officers to look at, and Andrew as well, at the senior level. Because I think I need assurances or reassurances that the way we're going to go forward for the next year is going to be great. And not, oh dear, it was because of this, it was because of that. So they're my concerns.
Thank you, Peter. Andrew, did you want to come back on?
Lucy wanted to answer some of the specifics about current arrangements in place, but I can maybe summarise. You wanted to, Lucy? Yeah, so, yeah, you're correct, there's obviously a lot has changed in the past 15 months. But I think as a verbiage, naturally, yeah, we can bring a paper back to this committee. And it might be good to try and bring that into the combined assurance process possibly, as well as one of our sort of annual checkpoints to see how things are going. Obviously, when we came in January, February time to present that paper, I think Covid was writ large throughout that. And we did try to articulate some of the challenges and measures that we've put in place to address that. But, yeah, you're right, as the smarter working agenda does develop, I think it would be right to audit and report back on the measures that we're putting in place. A, to ensure things like service and officer performance are maintained. And we're talking about delivering outcomes rather than things like presenteeism, particularly in terms of staff. But, you know, naturally, members need assurance on that. But also as well, how we continue to ensure we get maximum efficiency and productivity from our employees and teams. Yeah, absolutely right. And I think we'll take steps to ensure that we confide that assurance to you.
Okay, Andrew, Lucy?
Thank you, Chairman. So just following on from Andrew is to just say what we can do. We have obviously incorporated that in our planning for both the counter-for fraud work plan, which looks at the risks around different working environments, but also in our own planning. But what I can do is work with my colleagues in finance. And HR is pull together a briefing document that goes back to basics. So we can set out what the control environment is in the way going forward. So it's clearly, so you can see that. I think that might be helpful, as well as just giving you that assurance. We can show you what checks and balances are in place around people's performance management, either as staffing or delivery, productivity and all those kind of things. So it might be easier just to set out the framework and the systems and processes in place to give you that more detail. So we've incorporated that in our planning, but we definitely can work through. That will most probably be a paper in September, if that's okay for the committee. It's a bit late for the July meeting, I'm afraid.
Thank you, Lucy. I'm sure September would be acceptable. And clearly, it's the pace of change that's challenged everybody. We, you know, I think we've stepped up to the challenge practically very well in view of the time which we had to implement things. But it's always important that we look back and have lessons learned.
Chair, councillor Skinner has had his hand up.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm quite happy that Lucy's brought that back. Projects are quite straightforward from one point of view, that they have definite outcomes. The benefits might be a little bit harder if it's something going forward, but you have measurables there. What I'm taking from Lucy is there is a culture of constant improvement that's going across the whole organisation. So once we've got the framework there, the benefits should be benefiting the whole organisation. And I thought it was important just to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Steve, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate everything that's being said, and I think it's actually a jolly good idea with the framework. Have I got it right that this is something that will be ongoing and not just for one year and will continue? Or are you looking at the framework statically? And then, as things might well change in the next year, will it be fluid?
Every year, we review the governance and assurance framework of the council to see that it's robust and working effectively. So that's already in place. And we do have those structures and processes that support smarter working. And we have adapted and changed the way we work. What I'm proposing to do is pull that together in a briefing document for this committee, so you can see it all in one place. So the systems are there, they are working effectively because we have quite strong governance arrangements. So they have worked and adapted well. What we've been asked to is to be more explicit in showing you that, how that works in practice in a smarter working environment. So that's what I'm proposing to bring to the committee in September. And obviously, I can work with the chairman and vice-chairman to make sure that we're giving you the right information in the right way to meet your needs. But we do, as councillor Skinner said, we continually look at the way we work. And if we need to improve and change things, we have that rapid feedback loop which helps us do that.
Thank you, Lucy. Thank you for everybody's questions and contributions. I can't see any other members wishing to have raised any points, so thank you once again. I've just been, had a request from David here that we actually, I think, just adjourn the meeting for 10 minutes if possible. I think that's to resolve some technical issues, if that's what all members happy with that. Thank you. So we can adjourn for 10 minutes. Do you have a recommendation or a second? Thank you, all those in favour. Thank you, all show. Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you for pulling me up on that one. I'm getting ahead of myself as usual. Okay, so if we can bring Mazars in for item four now, if that's possible.
Okay, good morning everyone. As you probably know by now, my name's Cameron Waddell, so I'm the partner responsible for the Pension Fund Audit, though not the Council Audit. Part of the reason for that is, as I have around about 10 or 11 local government pension fund audits, and it's a relatively specialist area, so generally speaking, the partners that do pension funds do a number of those across the country, because we think that makes sense from an efficiency and audit quality point of view. So in terms of what we are required to do on the pension fund, fundamentally that hasn't changed since last year, even though a new code of practice came in. So we're still required to give an opinion on the pension fund accounts themselves, which is separate to the council opinion. We still have to give a report on the pension fund annual reports, that those are consistent with the audited pension fund accounts. We have to consider going concern, which is an interesting concept when you think about the assets invested in the pension fund, but regardless, we do need to consider that basis when we're doing the audit. Importantly on fraud, it is not our responsibility around about safeguarding assets, we don't actively look for fraud. What we must do is make sure that we design audit procedures with the good chance of detecting material fraud, but clearly talking to the audit committee officers and internal audit plays an important part of the audit too, in gathering that evidence. And finally, as I'm sure you're aware, that members of the public and/or journalists etc. do have the right to ask questions of both the council and auditor, and potentially object, although I don't believe there's been a history of that at Lincolnshire County Council. In terms of the team, you will see that John has replaced Mike Norman as the audit manager, he's just waving just now if you can see him. John is also responsible for Derbyshire Pension Fund, where we work together too, so again, I think good in terms of quality and efficiency, and Alex I think has been involved in this audit for a few years now as well, as the in-charge. In terms of timeline, things are a little bit unusual still in the local government production of accounts and audit world, and you're probably aware that MHCLG published specific regulations for this year, which gave the council up to the end of July to produce draft accounts, and the auditor, two months essentially back to where we were a couple of years ago, to do the audit, which I don't think was quite the intention of Sir Tony Redmond when he issued his report, but regardless, for Lincolnshire, we're anticipating getting the accounts much earlier than that, to allow us to get the fieldwork completed between July and September and conclude the audit, with hopefully a little less uncertainty at the end of March this year compared to last year in terms of asset values. You'll see that management rely on experts in producing the accounts, we too rely on experts as we need to, most notably the Consulting Actuary PWC, appointed by the National Audit Office for all suppliers of pension funds. At the moment, we don't anticipate using an expert in terms of valuations of unquoted investments, but that may change subject to the level of sensitivity at the year-end. I'm not going to go through the Service Organisations Chair, we set out the audit approach there in terms of each of the areas where the council uses those for the pension fund accounts. But that does take me on to significant risks and other key judgements, so these aren't significant risks to the council, the significant risk is the one, an area of the accounts where it's most likely that we could get it wrong, so therefore significant risk, we give the wrong opinion. So our key focus is possibly understandably around about management override, that risk exists in all audits, no matter how big or small or where they are, and we focus our attention very much on manual intervention in the accounts through journals, looking at the material estimates, and also considering anything that may come to our attention during the audit that might look unusual or unexpected. Secondly, perhaps unsurprisingly, we focus our attention on the valuation of unquoted investments, that is because there's no publicly observable data, there is a degree of estimation involved for obvious reasons, because you don't know how much something's worth until it's sold, so therefore we spend quite a lot of time on the audit actually undertaking our testing in those areas, as Andrew and his team are aware. In terms of fees, you'd probably be aware Chair from the annual letter, which I think's on the agenda too, that we did agree additional fees last year, some of that work is going to be replicated from 2021 onwards, because it's very much to do with regulatory expectations around about testing on unquoted investments etc, so things unlikely to change. You'll also perhaps ask about audit-related assurance services, we are required via the NEO protocol to cooperate with the auditors of admitted bodies to the fund, and therefore undertake a programme of testing on their behalf, totally where it's not something we would do routinely anyway, and provide a letter of assurance for them to allow them to conclude their council and other audits, and we charge a fee for that, nor in the past that fee I think has been invoiced directly to individual bodies, which isn't the way it should be done, because we don't have contracts directly with them for pension fund work, so this year we've agreed to recharge that to the county council, who will recharge that through to those bodies themselves, that's in line with most other pension fund audits, we understand in England, no matter which supplier it is. I'm not going to talk about the consultation of 2122 audit fee, we just merely draw the committee's attention to that. An important point around the audit independence as well, is that we have not been engaged to carry out any other work that's not directly involved in the audit. Just quickly on materiality Chair, which is page 23 of our report, that sets our overall materiality level, it sets out performance materiality, performance materiality is important because that's the level at which we test that, the reason for doing that is to allow a little bit of headroom if we find something between performance and headline materiality, so there's a potential risk around about completeness for example. And then for specific materiality, we set a separate amount for the fund account, and you'll see that's round about half of performance materiality, and we also set a trivial threshold where we wouldn't report to the audit committee, but any errors above, below that level would be reported to Andrew and his team for them to consider whether to amend or not. Beyond that Chair, there isn't really much else to say, Appendix A is perhaps one of the dullest dependencies you're ever going to read, it merely tells you what we need to tell you under the auditing standards, and in which report we will tell you those things, so I wasn't going to say much more than that. I am happy to take any questions at all from the committee. Over to you.
David, if you could indicate, thank you for the presentation. Do we have any questions? Andrew, if you could dictate your questions to David and similarly for Adam, thank you.
Last year, we had an issue of delayed accounts because of the difficulty in valuing an unquoted asset, that's highlighted as a risk. Does the council team or the auditors anticipate any such difficulties this year with the pension fund?
Thank you, Andrew.
I've got a question as well. Thank you, I've read the question. We are cautiously optimistic subject to receiving the accounts from the council and the working papers to support those accounts, and the other evidence we've requested or will request as part of the audit, including queries being answered on a timely basis, but if that is achieved, some of the uncertainty I think associated with last year has been removed, so we would anticipate that the September deadline is achievable this year.
It's probably just worth mentioning that the delay in the accounts last year was from the county council side, not from the pensions accounts, and it was to do with the valuation of the energy from waste plant, so we had to get an extra valuation done, and that was what caused the delay in publishing the accounts, there is this general...
I think the only other perhaps issue to add in relation to Lincolnshire is part of the delay was in relation to the council audit, so we were actually in a position on the pension fund audit to hit last year's deadline, it was just the hold-up on the council side, we can't issue the audit report on the pension fund before the council audit is certified complete, just an important point to be aware of, I think.
Coming at you from both sides there, so I'm pleased we said the same thing anyway.
I think we've received the assurance, thank you David, if you could pass that on. If you could just give David two seconds for the typing, Adam, and then Mark, questions?
No, my question was that, but I've probably got a question more for the offices over there, with regards to the valuation of investments, because obviously 50% of the 500 million relates to alternatives, could we explain what alternatives is, because the rest of them are pretty self-explanatory, but alternatives are... yeah.
So if I could come back, because it's quite a complicated mix of stuff, so if I could come back with a written explanation for the committee, that's probably the best way, so I don't give you any misleading or partial answers probably, that's okay, thank you.
It's just to give a range of investments, if you, obviously pension committee members would be able to point that out to you, and obviously having a good diversified portfolio, but obviously alternatives are somewhat where the risk lies, rather than some of the other more usual methods of investment. Any questions to the... okay, Mark?
Thank you Chair, it's set out in the Plan Strategy that part of the outcome of early work is to see if there is a need for a reassessment of the audit plan, and to undertake revisions if necessary, so we have a document which might be reassessed as a result of any of the early work, and of course this has all been done at speed, and it's not possible perhaps to bring these sort of things back to audit committee and so on, but has there been any need to revise the audit plan as a result of any of the early work?
Audit plan as a result of any earlier work, David?
Thank you.
I think just while you're waiting for Cameron to respond, I'm not aware of any need, the pension fund accounts are ready for them to go, and they'll start their work in a couple of weeks, so I'm not aware of anything, but we'll just see what Cameron says.
Well, it's reassuring, and they get every opportunity to raise any, haven't they?
So I've picked up a question from councillor Alan, at this stage we don't feel the need to revise the audit plan, any revision would probably come about on receipt of draft accounts, if indeed we need to do so, the key thing that tends to change is the calculated materiality level, because that is clearly based on some assumptions on our part, based on the prior year for 2021, which is then updated on receipt of the account, so materiality may go up and down, the main impact that would have would be on sample sizes that we undertake during the audit, and also potentially the level of reporting that we undertake in terms of the audit committee.
Just post thank you on the chat David for that response. Any further questions? Any further questions to Cameron? I think that concludes the questions on this paper, David. And thanks to you once again for typing into the chat function, thank you. So we have the recommendation, members. Could I have a proposer? A seconder? Thank you. And a show of hands for those in favour of the recommendation? Thank you, that's carried unanimously, thank you. So if we can now move to the annual audit letter. This is for the council and the pension fund. Michelle, would you like to introduce, and then we'll pass to Mazza?
So as we've just mentioned, the 1920 accounts were delayed because of the valuation. Sue obviously gave an update at the March committee as to work that was ongoing. So I'd just like to hand over to Sue to kind of conclude the story, if I may, if that's okay?
Okay, so we've got Sue on, can Sue hear us and see us?
Okay, thank you, I hope you can all hear me. If not, please can someone let me know in the chat. This report is on the annual audit letters, and it effectively brings to a close the audit of the 2019-20 financial statements. When this committee last met on the 19th of March, it received an update report on the 2019-20 accounts. And that report explained that the completion of the accounts and therefore the audit had been delayed due to the need for us to obtain a new valuation of the energy from waste plant. I'm pleased to report that the process has now concluded, and this report presents our two annual audit letters from Mazza's. One for the council and one for the Lincolnshire Pension Fund. Both annual audit letters report positive conclusions about the audits, and you can see more detail about those conclusions on pages 51 and 65 to 66 of your reports pack. The letters also include sections which give a forward look at changes coming up, such as changes to the auditors' work on value for money arrangements. And finally, you'll see from the report that the cost of the order increased this year, an additional £19,000 for the main council audit, and an additional £6,000 for the pension fund audit. And the reasons for these increases are shown in the letters and also in the covering report. The council's main accounts for 1920 have been published on our website, and the pension fund accounts have been published on the West Yorkshire Pension Fund website. Chair, they are the main points on this report, are there any questions from the committee?
Thank you, Sue. Members, any questions to Sue Maycock on her summation of the annual audit letter? And so do we then have any questions for... So if we say to Sue, no questions to Sue, thank you so much. And any questions for Cameron and John Mazza's, please, regarding the annual audit letter?
Okay, thank you.
I think, just summarise from the chair, in terms of the Mazza's, we're not inclined to ask any further questions to Mazza's, I think that's what we're saying, is that correct? And we were pleased that the accounts have now been fully signed off, and we look forward to the audit being concluded and everything concluding on time last year and this year. And thanks to all our officers for assisting Mazza's in concluding the queries. That's acceptable to everyone? So we have... So if we can take a vote, please, if we can have a recommendation, look at the recommendation on the paper. Could I have a proposer? Seconder, all those in favour? Everyone, I think, thank you. And if we can, then David, just thank Mazza's for their attendance, and hopefully we will resolve our technical issues next time. And thank you to Simon and yourself and the IT staff for trying to resolve the issues for us, okay? So, members, if we can move to the internal audit progress report, and perhaps that's item seven, page 101, 132. If I could turn to Lucy Plage to present the report, please, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, this sets out our progress to date with audit work completed. I will be handing over to Julie Castleton to present the paper. So I'll just hand over to her, hopefully she'll be able to connect.
Good morning, everybody, hopefully you can hear me. Our audit progress report covered the period from February to the end of April. Delivery of our audit work has continued to be challenging this year, but at the end of April, we had completed 92% of our plan. Work undertaken over the last month means we're now close to completing all the audits to inform the Head of Internal Audits on your opinion in July. Six audit reports and three pieces of consultancy work have been completed in the period, including one report which was given a low assurance opinion. Details of this audit on the implementation of mosaic finance are in Appendix Four on page 128. With two further pieces of audit work at draft report stage, as listed at the bottom of page 107, these have been issued, and we are awaiting management responses to complete final reports. Details of our current activity are provided on page 115. Reports are now being drafted for the four finance-related activities and will be issued shortly. We continue to be involved in and provide support to council through assurance and other activities, including validation work on a number of grants and ongoing involvement in the transformation programme, particularly the BW redesign project. At the point of writing this report, our assurance on the BW project with amber moving towards red. This is particularly based on progress with delivering payroll parallel runs. As a design to confirm the new build of the system, this is expected and will calculate pay and generate postings to the accounts correctly. But the approach being taken to checking reconciliation is particularly unnecessarily robust, to ensure the council does not repeat the issues that we encountered in 2015. However, this is taking longer than expected, and as a result, basic successful go-live in November at risk. Project Board and team are currently reviewing plans going forward to ensure we have successful delivery. On page 110, pages 121 and 122, we've provided an update on progress with the implementation of outstanding recommendations from previous audit reports. There continues to be positive engagement in completing management actions with 22% still outstanding. In the majority of cases, the planned action is in progress, the completion date set for the autumn. There are also a small number of areas where actions are delayed until the implementation of business world. There's just one limited assurance report on cyber security where actions remain outstanding. The reasons for this are set out on page 110 of our audit report, and were explained by the Assistant Director, IMT and Enterprise Architecture at the previous audit committee meeting. We will continue to follow our audit recommendations as part of our audit plans. Finally, on pages 118 and 119, we've provided summary information on other matters of interest to the committee, including the recent best value inspection report on Liverpool City Council and a grant Thornton review on lessons from recent public interest reports. As part of our audit plan for 2122, we have allocated time to review recent public interest reports and consider any implications and lessons that can be learned by the council. Hopefully, I've picked up the key points from the report, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions you may have. Also present this morning, we've got Andrew McLean, Assistant Director of Transformation, and Miles Windsor, Head of Corporate Assistance, to answer any questions you might have on the lower assurance report on the implementation of mosaic finance. Thank you.
David, we're still having to type in messages, yeah? So if you could pass on our thanks, please, for the presentation. And I will now look to members for questions relating to that. I think while people have a think about what they're going to, what their thoughts are. Obviously, following up on your comments regarding the payroll... Okay, and I'll bring Stephen later. Obviously, we're looking to have a smooth transition. So have we left enough time to do the parallel running? And if you could respond accordingly, please, thank you.
Can I ask if Andrew McLean would answer that question for you? Andrew is the project sponsor on the BW redesign programme. I think he can probably give you a better answer than I can on that one.
Yes, certainly, happy to come in there, Julie, thank you, good morning, everyone. I think it's with regards to the time for a parallel run, what it is, it's absolutely essential that we carry out the parallel runs. So the intention in the plan is to have three parallel runs in total. And it's during the first payroll parallel run that we've encountered some of the issues. So what we're doing is to give the full assurance, is leaving no stone unturned. Any issue that comes out of that parallel run, we're going back and checking. So the Hoopla system has been built, that's had its systems tested successfully. We're now carrying out user acceptance testing. So what we're doing is, as we go through that parallel run on the Hoopla system, we do a reconciliation process, and then out of there, we investigate any issues. So if our payroll's saying one figure, and that looks different in the Hoopla system, we have to go in and investigate, and that's what's taking the delay at the moment in the parallel run. But that's what gives us the ultimate assurance that when we go live, everything's accurate. And some of those things are down to rounding, some of those things around investigation of some of our manual workarounds that we have in place, because the intention is that as we move to Hoopla, we'll remove all that manual activity that goes on at present. So the parallel runs are essential, really, for carrying out and giving us the assurance that we need. We have looked around whether we need three for assurance. I think we all would rather make sure that we do have three full parallel runs, rather than rush the system and affect any data quality. I don't know if that helps to answer that question.
Thank you, Julie, and thank you to Andrew. Yeah, my concern is we had, not that we need less parallel runs, but we might need more than three. But yeah, well, obviously, we understand that we have to get rid of the manual workarounds. And yeah, I mean, obviously, you know, I think three would normally be the advised number of parallel runs that we ought to be doing. And obviously, we've got to look to the time involved in all of these things as well, because obviously, last time, the data wasn't delivered on time, and it caused all sorts of problems, both for employees and the pension fund administration. If you can paraphrase that. Steve, well, Dave is typing.
Thank you. My question is to do with the safeguarding children, which is on page 112.
Certainly, in terms of needing more than three, certainly, that's not the position from those on the board. So the project lead from Hoopla, who's carried out several of these, three is generally the standard. We're also engaging with Jason Davenport, who's an external expert payroll consultant, and again, happy with three. So three parallel payroll runs should be more than adequate for a system of our size and complexity. What we wouldn't want to do is bring it down lower than that. You could possibly, but certainly the three gives us that assurance with the data last time. One of the things that is taking the delay at the moment is because of our robustness on not letting that data quality affect the assurance. So any issue whatsoever, we're going into it, investigating it, what's up with the current system, why it's not working in the new system, so we can go back and make sure that that is accurate. So we have tested out the number of payroll runs with the external independent advisers, and they're very comfortable with that approach we're taking, thank you.
Thank you. As I say, my question is to do with the safeguarding children, which is on page 112. I noticed that the COVID has obviously had some impact on the care of the children, on the safeguarding of the Children's Council's care, and that children's services have been unable to address these issues due to COVID restrictions. This worries me a little bit, because obviously, it's easy to be complacent when it comes to safeguarding. My question is, have they now been able to address these issues? Or is it something that we will be expecting to see in the future?
Hi, in terms of the safeguarding audit, the issues that were identified were around health guarding KPIs, such as registration with dentists, GPs, et cetera. And those KPIs not being achieved. Children's Services are working with Health Partnership to look at what can be done to increase the numbers on that. And then the other thing was delaying court proceedings in the criminal justice system, along the public law and private law areas. Again, children's services have been trying to mitigate that risk by having regular discussions with courts, providing support to families to enable them to attend virtually, but there are still delays. In terms of any sort of further update on that, we haven't looked into that as yet, and I would have to go back to the committee in terms of any more recent updates.
Steve, would you just like to come back?
Well, thank you, I just really ought to just say, because you mentioned the health, my wife works with the Look After team as a health visitor. I haven't actually discussed this with her, but she's obviously makes the appointments for them. So I just wanted to clarify our interest.
To Julie, that. Members, further questions for Julie, Andrew, colleagues? Could I just do another one from the chair, please? Obviously, on page 122, we have the cyber security, which is, as we all know, is an ongoing issue, and it will always be an ongoing issue. We have two high-risk actions still outstanding, though I mean, I think they've actually been put into medium on the paper, whatever. And obviously, these relate to network and disaster recovery. Are we, obviously, are we content with the completion dates on those? They've been March 2022 and 2024, respectively, recognising that we're moving towards cloud technology with that?
I have to admit, I'm not an expert in this particular area of work. We have done two recent audits on the network and disaster recovery, and obviously had considerable discussions with John Wickens around these areas. So I can only work on the basis that these are deadlines around the delivery of Microsoft data. James Drury is on the call, so James might be able to give a further update.
Thanks, Julie, good morning, everybody. Yes, so we're certainly confident with those dates, councillor rulings, that some of them seem a bit in the distance, and I accept that. But there's a fair bit of work to do on some of them to get the Azure up and running and working effectively to do that. So I'm confident that that will tackle those identified high and medium risks and actions. After saying that, without sounding too pessimistic, cyber security is constantly changing, and the threat is developing and enhancing. So it's fairly typical of this. So it's fairly typical of this type of activity where things are put in place to prevent it and then someone finds a new way around it. The more that we move towards a cloud and Microsoft-based platforms, though, doesn't mean that we're not susceptible to it, but it does mean that we've got the biggest investment globally in the world against it, as opposed to doing our own thing, if you like, which would leave us far more vulnerable. So I'm confident on the dates and I'm confident that we'll be in a stronger position in the future than we have been in the past. But I'm equally saying that, you know, cyber security will continue to be a genuine risk and threat for us and all other public sector organisations for the foreseeable future.
Thank you to James for the response and Julie. And we do appreciate the, his comments regarding the fact that cyber security is always a moving fee, so to speak. Any further questions, members? Okay, well, thank you to all our contributors. And if we can now look at the recommendations, which I think the reporters were noting. And I think we've looked to the actions we need to keep on to review. And with safeguarding, a cyber security always going to be there because of the nature of the issues involved in both of them. And I'm sure when we look at the work plan, we'll, we'll keep in constant, we'll keep a constant review and have John Wickens and his colleagues back to, to give us some more assurances on the IT issues around that. And and obviously, we'll be meeting the directors in our February meeting to consider things like safeguarding and the current issues around such items. So could I have a proposer, please, for recommendation? Thank you, a second there? All those in favour? Thank you. Thank you, members. Okay, so we now turn to item eight and I'll ask Michelle to introduce the SIF for Financial Management.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So members will have seen a number of press articles about local authorities getting into financial difficulties and some of the measures that are being taken in response to austerity and the need to try and balance their books and some of the risks that they're taking to balance the short-term finances over long-term sustainability. In response to that, we've already seen some changes to our codes of practice. So we've seen changes to the prudential code and PWLB borrowing to address some of the concerns around commercial activity. But this report is focusing on the new code of practice that's been introduced by SIF to support good practice in financial management. And we're required to demonstrate a proportionate compliance with this from April 21. The report also picks up our self-assessment that we've been requested to do by Mazars. So Cameron mentioned earlier about the the changes to the code of practice for audit that have come into effect for their audit practice this year. And that really does refocus some of their work on the value for money element of their audit. So we've also picked up the value for money audit requirements that Mazars have asked us to pick up in this report as well. So the Financial Management Code is based on a set of principles and it contains 17 standards which start on page 135 of your report. Overall, the assessment we've done, we've came out, come out and we've kind of satisfied that we have proportionate compliance with the standards. There are a number where we've indicated our assessment of them are green, but there are improvements that we can make to our practice. And there's a few where we need to undertake some actions to meet full compliance and they're shown as amber on the appendix. The detail is shown in appendix A and that's from page 139. There are some key themes that we've picked up that are areas that we could improve on. So in summary, those are looking at longer-term financial planning with clear links, that golden thread to our corporate plan, service performance and our asset management strategies and how we invest our capital programme. Some clear methodology for options appraisals to support decision-making. We mentioned earlier about projects and that decision-making process. We have a robust process in place, but that could be improved in terms of the information that's included in the appraisal of those options. We feel that we could improve the transparency of our financial resilience assessment. The committee did have a paper come last year on our SIF for Financial Resilience Score, but that's something that we could improve and make more of a regular appearance for audit committee. And some of that transparency about the key areas of risk on our balance sheet, such as debtors, making sure that that's, that's very clearing our reporting. We'd like to make some continued improvement in our reporting, particularly of our longer-term and medium-term financial planning assumptions and the companies that the county council operates. And a couple of other areas that we've just picked up on, the stakeholder engagement, one of the areas in the code that we feel that we could probably do better and obviously work with our corporate colleagues to look at the community engagement strategy and how we get better engagement in the setting of our financial situation. And continued development of financial literacy in the organisation generally, skills within the organisation and in the finance team to support the financial management of the council. Some of these improvements have already been identified as part of the finance team's service plan. One thing that is key in the SIF FM code, though, is that financial management's responsibility for the whole organisation, not just the finance team. So we'll be looking to see how we can incorporate that across the organisation as well. Just on the value for money arrangements, Cameron mentioned the National Audit Office Code of Audit Practice has changed, so Mazars will be required to be satisfied still about our arrangements for value for money, but they'll no longer issue a single conclusion as part of their audit of the financial statements. They'll report any significant weaknesses as they are identified and their reporting into the accounts will just be on an exception basis. But they will now be required to produce an annual auditor's annual report and that will cover arrangements for financial sustainability, governance and improving value for money. And they're required to produce that report no more than three months after the opinion on the statements. And our assessment that they've asked us to complete on that is appendix B on the report, which hasn't identified any areas of concern. So at that point, I'll hand over and ask if there's any questions.
Oh, thank you, Michelle. I'm looking around the chamber. Paul, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just, this is, this is all difficult stuff in some respects because we're getting really short-term settlements from the government. How are you going to balance your long-term risks and plans when you don't actually know what's coming? Thank you.
It's challenging. I think that's the safest thing to say. We do have to make a number of assumptions and there are a number of assumptions we can make. So we can make assumptions around the cost pressures that are in our system and that's one thing that we've, we've been very good at at this council. I think we've, we've got a very clear process where we work with the executive directors and make sure our forward planning includes any cost pressures on the delivery of services that they think they're going to bring in. And we can make some assumptions on things like our council tax base and council tax funding. Quite a large proportion of our funding now comes from local taxation rather than government funding. So, so we can make some assumptions around that. The things that we can't make assumptions are about what the government might do about adult care funding, things like that. So we do have to try and assume that some of these levels of funding will remain the same and look at the factors that we can assess. So we do have a medium-term plan that's part of the budget that's set by council in February that looks at the three-year period. We'd like to do something that's a little bit longer and tie that up with our capital strategy and capital investment as well.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. Paul, Steve.
Thank you. This is probably just a very simple one on presentation. When I first read the table, A, B, C, D, of your 17 points, you've got no action and then no action but improvement identified. And basically, you've answered it, Laurent, but I found that very confusing at first. That here we were saying that there were an issue, but we don't need to take any action. But I'm assuming that that's to do with the timescale and just wondered if that might improve the quality of presentation or clarity of presentation, not quality, apologies.
My apologies if the presentation's confusing. I think the the standards where we've put no action is where we've, we've completed an assessment and we don't think we need to do anything further to meet the compliance. There are some standards where we've said there is an action required, where we don't feel that we are fully meeting the standard and we do need to do something to comply. But where we've got no action but improvement identified is effectively the halfway pass where we've, we've, we think we're compliant, but there's more we can do to improve that in terms of our reporting and transparency. So sorry if that's confused things, but that, that was just the kind of three levels of assessment we kind of gave ourselves.
Thank you for the explanation, Michelle. It's terminology can sometimes be a little bit confusing, isn't it? Any further questions? Perhaps I could just, just ask a couple of ones. Obviously, in the past, Michelle, we've, you know, if we're looking at a balance sheet audit, okay, which is, if you're looking at the vulnerability of any organisation, the balance sheet usually tells you how vulnerable you are or gives you an indication of that. Obviously, I mean, the, the council has benefited from the fact in this unprecedented pandemic that we have had the financial resilience given to us by having enough cash reserves to, to cope with at least some short-term and medium-term issues. So would you say that it's important we, we keep those, you know, we keep an eye on those reserves and make sure that they're robust? And also, I think when you referred to the debtors situation in looking at balance sheet items, obviously, some of the local authorities were sort of counting the chickens before they hatched in terms of anticipating future revenues that certainly from central government that didn't materialise. And I appreciate your views on those. Clearly, as an organisation, we're not accounting for rebates and things like that and putting those in the balance sheet ahead of time. But what are the other dangers you see from, from things that might, might apply?
Right, so the first part about long-term planning and the balance sheet audit. So it's absolutely essential to maintain those reserves at, maintain our reserves at a suitable level, which is obviously a key part of our balance sheet. So I think probably if I can just, for some context, during last year, we spent an extra £100 million in response to COVID and that was all covered by government grant. What we don't know is what that will mean in terms of the longer term and how long some of those commitments and extra reliance on our services or, you know, the impact on the pricing in terms of the supply market, how long they will just go on for. So it's really absolutely imperative we, we keep an eye on our reserves and make sure we keep enough in reserve to deal with unforeseen circumstances. And it's, the level of reserves is a key measure in the Financial Resilience Index that SIF put together. Debtors, I don't think we're, our largest debtor is around our adult care income, our adult care contributions to services. I think we're in a much, we're not in the position that a local, a lot of local authorities are in where they're very reliant on commercial income and retail units and things like that. So we've been quite fortunate in that circumstance that we've not been reliant on that type of income and we don't have those debtors and that, that, those, those accounts entries in our accounts. Did that fully answer that second question, councillor rulings?
Yes, it did. I was just trying to give a context to it because obviously, each local authority is quite different in what they've tried to do. But we haven't taken those commercial risks that other authorities have taken, particularly on commercial property, which could be a real problem going forward when people are going perhaps to change the way they work.
So our capital strategy is quite clear that our investment is purely around delivering the objectives of the council in terms of service delivery or asset replacement. We don't have any commercial activity that is purely for income, you know, to make income for the council. So as I say, we've, we've not been in that position that a lot of local authorities have been in where they're, they're now struggling with some of that commercial income assumptions.
Thank you for that, Michelle. I think it obviously, SIF addressed these issues because they're, they're good, good way of ensuring that your organisation is run in a financially appropriate manner. So we'd have to comply with them on a sort of professional basis and statutory basis, but they're just good common sense issues in the first place. Okay. So we have the recommendation. So could I have a proposer in a second there, please? Thank you, Steve. Adam, thank you. All those in favour? Thank you. So that concludes item eight. So if we can now move on to the final item, which is item nine. And this is our work plan, which will be, or will be informed in part by discussions we've had at this meeting and previously. So if I can pass over to Lucy.
Thank you, Chairman. So if I just take you to page 171 of the pack, that sets out the next meeting, which is the 12th of July. So that this meeting is again, one of the key meetings of the committee and covers a lot of your core terms of reference. So there's some key annual reports from, from the head of audit, monitoring officer and information assurance team, plus the annual governance statement, the review and sign off of that and some work on the key financial statements of the council. So we do have some informal training before the meeting. So the meet, informal meeting starts at 9:15. We were anticipating to have a teams training, but we might reassess that after today and look to have Ian Fy field in, in person. But I'll, I'll leave that to my finance colleagues to sort out. So similar to last year, we have the training to help with the scrutiny of the accounts. The democratic services will take notes of the questions and dialogue of that informal session so that they can be port forward into the formal meeting, which is due to start at 11 o'clock. So as, as I say, it's quite a weighty meeting, but most of the work on the accounts will have been done in that first hour from 9:15. So I think those who were with us last year followed the same process. So hopefully, you can share some of the experience of that with your colleagues. And then the only other item that I've brought forward is the briefing around the control environment for smarter working and homeworking, which will come to the September meeting. The work plan is set out to basically give you the assurances that are required and being sought by the committee in terms of your terms of reference. So it gives you a bit of a guide of what you're looking at and why you're looking at it. And the, the forward plan goes all the way till next year. So, so it's more of an information piece or if there's any other items the committee or the chairman would like added to the forward plan.
Thank you, Lucy. Paul did indicate it, sir.
Yeah, so just, thank you, Chair. I was just picking up on that last item. If, if you refer back to page 126 on mobile devices, that there could be some sort of risk of us losing data. And I wondered if we could just put that into the agile working and other things, some sort of to convince us that the risk is controlled. That, that's basically it. Thank you, Chairman.
We, we have an audit report on mobile devices going through the audit process as we speak. So the outcome of that work will be part of the progress report that comes into the September meeting. But also, we will be, I will make sure it's incorporated in that briefing paper.
Thank you, Lucy. And obviously, we've got the Horizon Scanning in September. And looking forward, you know, we, we need to keep that review in place regarding basically the whole IT, cyber security issues, which we said aren't going to go away. It's going to be with us pretty much all the time in terms of being one of those existential internal threats that we have to deal with. Okay, so if any, have you got any further comments or suggestions of the work plan? Okay, so all we are happy to note the work plan. Thank you. And also perhaps looking forward to further training, Lucy, we're going to look at lessons learned from other office. We're going to look at lessons learned from other authorities, aren't we, about weakness in in financial planning and and governance going forward, again, an ongoing thing. Thank you.
Yes. I I thought it was a statement. Sorry, I was going to respond. Sorry. Yes.
Um, yeah, sort of self-assessment, constant self-assessment, really, to make sure that we we have thought about all the the problems that that can arise. I think you just need to keep asking yourself those questions and and because there's been some pretty alarming incidents of things not going quite as they ought to have done in local authorities, certainly in the last few months, okay? But they haven't built up in five minutes. There've clearly been problems that have built up over a number of years. Okay, so do we take a vote, David, on the on the work plan? I think we did. We didn't. We didn't. So, did we? Okay, we're all happy with the work plan? Yes, okay. Okay, so that's um, that's carried then. Members, thank you very much. So that concludes the um meeting today. And we've had a few IT issues, but thanks again to Simon and and your IT colleagues and David for his imitable typing. And hopefully, ironically, the teams worked perfectly when we were all in different locations. But but these are just the the issues that you get with trialling new technologies all the time. So, um, again, we'll, we're not, don't have those resolved for for future meetings. But thank you again to everyone. Great to see everyone in person. And we'll keep our fingers crossed that next time we meet things nationally will be a little easier. Perhaps, perhaps not. We'll, we'll, we'll hope for the best. Okay? Thank you very much, everyone.